Okay, you ready Katie? All right, all right, let's do it. Okay, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Ralph?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, and we are back for the two P M call. Victor, please, well, first, I guess, are there any continuances or withdrawals? I don't think so, but. Okay, no, doesn't look like it. Victor, please call the first case.
First case three forty twenty five S forty eight sixteen West every team.
Good afternoon, members of the board, my name is Paul Kopek. Representing the applicant vital health eighty eight LLC, doing business in the side spot. My left is here. I'm an managing member of the LLC Mr. Greg Lo, to his left is his wife and who's going to be managing this facility. This young lean, Angela Wang. As I mentioned, we have met with the Chamber of Commerce. And they given they're okay with this project. I discussed your letter. How many days, what days a week?
Oh, here, hold on, let me, let me swear them in first. Could both of you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, you're here, you're here on this one as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
What are your hours of operation going to be?
Ten to nine, ten in the morning, nine in.
And how many days a week of that?
Seven days.
Seven days a week. And we've got in front of the Chamber of Commerce that rep has got their blessing go forward. You and I, wife, Yang Li, have discussed the letter of August thirteenth with you. And you have reviewed the recommendations specifically. What you would have to maintain on the existing building, the non-reflective window on the face treating building for sun. Not painted over dark in any way instructed. So that the reception reception in waiting area is visible from the street and if this is past, you was ready to do that.
Yes.
Great.
For the question.
Um, uh, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Appreciate it.
Next case three forty one twenty five S seventy seven fifty six South Morgan.
Right, uh, would everyone planning to testify? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you, counselor. Please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
For the record, my name is Agnes Black, I'm in the training room of in Berlin LLC. And I present very proudly represent the applicant Primo Center for mothers and children. In this proposed special use for the transitional residence at seventy seven fifty six South Morgan. And I have here with me with me Miss Felicia Blaney, she's the CEO. Chief executive. My, what are you?
CEO.
She's the boss. So she's the boss for the organization and and I also have Jordan Winkle, our project architect. And we also have Joe Ryan, our M A I experience. Uh, for just a little bit about the applicant, forty five years Primo Center. Has been providing supportive housing for the most vulnerable population of Chicago. And they have a very holistic approach, not just providing housing, they provide trauma. Uh, trauma experienced care, they provide comprehensive mental, dental and physical. Health uh, coverage and they also provide early childhood development, development services for for the residents. So, uh, not only they have this comprehensive approach, they have a very much uh, great resources and experience. Uh, each year on average, they've been assisting more than eleven hundred people affected by extreme poverty. Uh, they have a very healthy budget. And on annual basis, ninety five percent of Primos facilities. Uh, in interim housing are placed into stable housing and receive follow up services. Now turning our attention to the subject property, property improved with an existing old church building. Uh, built more than a hundred years ago, it's been vacant for many years, it's been actually in demolition court and has a pending demolition order. Uh, currently, uh, there are plenty and and plenty of different structural. Uh, violations, the applicant is uh, is intending to save this building, we have this building. And adaptively reuse for the proposed transitional residence. We are also in the process of placing the building on the National Register of Historic Places. So after the building is beautifully, we have them brought into his original glory. We will be establishing this proposed transitional residence. Uh, July sixteen twenty twenty five, we had a city council approval of the type one zoning change for this proposed use and this proposed rehab. And that was resoning from R Street to B one dash street district. So that number one, they can take advantage of uh, T S L parking reduction. And also to be able to establish headquarters for the organization. So we will have also uh, offices for the for the Primo Center. Uh, under that zoning change, type one zoning change, we had an optional relief again for elimination of the parking. This this property uh, used to have a um, occupancy of six hundred people in that church, they've never had any parking. So again, this is adaptive reuse, so we were able to eliminate any additional parking requirements for this uh, new use. We also received a variation relief from all the bulk requirements of the underlying district. Because again, this is an existing at this point non-conforming building, so those variations allow the building to continue remain as 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 is. With those uh, existing non-conformities. In terms of the proposed use, we are proposing. To adaptively reuse this building as a transitional residence, we will have uh, forty four families, forty four moms with children. We will have maximum hundred twenty four residents. Uh, as I mentioned before, this side will also be a headquarters for the organization. Uh, the residential program will will operate twenty four hours, seven days, three sixty five days per year. The administrative office hours will be generally between nine A M and five P M, Monday through Friday. Uh, there will be internal community programming for the residents, group counseling sessions, workshops, music. Uh, movement classes, fitness classes and holiday and birthday celebrations again for the. For all the age groups and residents within the building. Uh, they will also have early childhood uh, daycare center for uh, for children between zero to five. The there will be some programming involving after school programs for elementary uh, children. And all of this will be overseen and supervised by up to forty five employees, so they will work over three shifts per day. And they will include teachers, therapists, uh, maintenance personnel, administrators, um, case managers and so forth and so on. Uh, the interior of the building will be uh, also obviously fully we have, and there will be additional floors installed. So that we can have four different levels, the basement level will have kitchen, laundry, offices, storage. And the upper three levels will have those residential living quarters and some community areas. Uh, the building will also provide a new ADA ramp to accommodate people of all abilities. As I mentioned before, T S L location, we have a very good access to all kinds of modes of public transportation, very well served by different um, sad corridors. So in addition to the fact that we are excused from eliminating, from parking elimination. We think that this is a perfect location to actually have that use and be able to adaptively reuse this this building, which will be beautiful again. Uh, we have worked closely with Alderman Moore, we had a very well attended community meeting, we received community support. We received Alderman Moore's support and we are hoping uh, for your approval here today. Are my witnesses out there leave a question?
Thank you. Uh, for both witnesses, uh, both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. They will be, sorry, I keep forgetting you're over there, Joe. Uh, thank you, they will be admitted into the record. Uh, for the applicant, um, have you had a chance to read the Department of Plan Development's recommendation letter?
Yes.
And uh, does the applicant agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
Yes.
Great. Um, are there any questions from the board?
Sure. Alfred Moore is behind you.
Oh, I I'm sorry, Alfred Moore, I I didn't even see you here. Would you like to speak on this matter?
You know what? This team is just great, uh, CEO is um, a wonderful person that's going to be through a quality job. Uh, we see what Trump is doing about talking about lacking up homeless folks and stuff like that. Uh, it's it's needed more now than ever. And although some people in certain communities um, see things as a challenge. But we can point out the good that they've done over in Inglewood, but also um, the housing that we have like on eighty thirty in Honory and one in Inglewood off of. Um, seventy and Yale, you don't even know that they're there. And so uh, people, you know, their their fears get settled. But what I liked, uh, as as it was stated earlier, it was a well attended meeting. But overwhelmingly, um, the community supported it, and that's what I'm sure so and I and I totally support this um, project. And I want to also.
Very good, thank you very much. Um, okay, are there any questions from the board? Sounds like a great project, we will take it under advisement.
And Mr. Chairman, my my last uh, last three cents. Um, number one, I wanted to say thank you from all of us, from our team. To Alderman Moore for his guidance and also to D P D team, Fernando, Nancy, Joe. Uh, everybody has been so accommodating to us and trying to expedite, this is obviously very, very important. Project and and service and use and they everyone was absolutely wonderful, so thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you so much.
Next case two oh nine twenty five S seven one thirty nine South Emerald.
Thanks, thank you, Joe, I appreciate that. Uh, uh, would the witnesses please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you, uh, counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, uh, this is Kathy Harden, my left and uh, this hardened has been in front of this board. Uh, at least three times before, uh, she uh, run, she is very empathetic. Uh, but she runs a tough shop and she has several of them, it's all been successful, they have that's no problem. She um, has rules, if people don't follow the rules, they're out of there. And uh, she took this house which uh, was down and out and she has. Um, she's purposefully reusing it and she will have thirteen either. People with this uh, alcohol or uh, drug problems or uh, people. When you halfway position between uh, their confinement and integrating back into the community. And um, this case was continued uh, to have further discussions with the alderman, he was going to have a a public meeting. Uh, after meeting with Kathy and and uh, seeing the work she's done other places, he decided uh, that he would just support it as is. So we asked for your support as well.
And we do have that letter in the file. Um, for the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you, they'll be admitted into the record. Um, for the applicant, have you had a chance to read the department's recommendation letter? And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Next case two ten twenty five eighty twenty six oh nine West class.
Sir, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you, counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Brandon Stizer, who is to my left is um, came to Chicago after living various places in the country and Wisconsin. Uh, to the Art Institute, he is a architect and an artist. And a designer and a creator of things. And uh, he lives on a block that is right up against the railroad, it's a dead end. Uh, there's all M one, the entire block, except his house, his houses are for which uh. He tells me that I was involved in in two thousand and eight or something like that, I'm sorry, I don't remember that. And um, so he lives there, he knows everybody on the block, there's nobody against it. He wants to build a his studio, his his working uh, office and. Place that he can uh, build things and design things in this lot that's between his house and the railroad. And uh, the odd thing about it is it has a very thin little alley, the garbage trucks can't go to it. And uh, uh, we worked out with zoning that uh, if he could get a variance here. Can push a garbage bin, a camouflage thing for the garbage in the front yard. Nearest the railroad there um, that uh, they will give them a flat, so we're asking for the front yard to set that to allow.
The trash enclosure because it can't be in the back, right? Yeah, okay. Sir, do you affirm that the uh, materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you, they'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Uh, just just for clarity, adjacent to you on the side where the trash is going to be? Is that another house or is it that is one of the commercial moments? I just couldn't.
Uh, adjacent to the trash enclosure is a side alley by that. Between the property and the.
Okay, so the viaduct is right up there.
Yes.
Looked like.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, with that, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Last case two thirty one twenty five S eighteen thirty West Grant.
But for this particular place, my. I don't mind if you permit me acting for second case.
He's got a, the applicant has to be here.
Ellie.
Oh, I.
Okay. All right, so um, I guess we'll take a short recess, uh, I'm I move that we uh, recess for for ten minutes. Uh, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Ralph?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, we're in recess for ten minutes. Thank you. We should was now, now. Now, now, since I said that, am I, am I bound by the sentence or can I, I think that's. All right, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Not too many recess. Okay, um, I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Ralph?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we're back. Uh, we are on the last case two thirty one twenty five S, uh, sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Uh, thank you very much for the record, my name is Kula Castro, I am a partner at Costa Esger. Uh, here today I'm behalf of the applicant and see properties LLC. To my right is the manager of the applicant who also conveniently happens to be the owner of the building and actually owner of the architecture firm that is on the side. As well. Um, would you please state your name, this is addressed for the record.
Super Northwest five oh nine North Walcott Avenue, Illinois six oh six two two.
Thank you very much, I do want to acknowledge for the record that uh, we enjoyed working with Nancy and Joe. Uh, from uh, Nancy's team on this to getting this to the finish line, I just want to thank them for their efforts. Uh, in this matter. Um, so the the for this particular case, uh, we are asking uh, for special use to allow an indoor event venue on the ground floor. Of the building, previously in the past, uh, if you can see the storefront there. Uh, that used to be an event space, a fair years back and uh, it's been vacant ever since. We're here to ask for a special use in order to.
Sir, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you, they'll be admitted to the record. Have you um, read the Department of Plan Development's recommendation letter?
Oh, I have the letter here.
Go ahead and uh, and and read it, and the question is going to be whether you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in the letter.
The letter states that only your entity will be able to operate. Uh, then you'll adhere to the our, the plan of operations and to the plan, to the drawings that you you have been working with us with the city.
Pursued to the provisions of section seventeen dash thirteen dash nine oh three of the Chicago zoning ordinance, the zoning administrator is required to submit a written report. And you see special use application, if you want me to.
No, 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 you, no, 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 no.
Why you couldn't be able to.
The the question, so.
She's read it to myself.
Yeah, read it to yourself and we're asking if you can affirm that you that you will agree to be bound by the conditions. Set forth in the recommendation part of the letter.
I agree.
Great, thank you very much. What um, kind of events are you imagining uh, occurring at this uh, space?
Um, the events are um, always private parties, there are never um, things for sale, uh, there's no. Um, charge to go in, um, they're usually small events with uh, people that have birthday parties. Uh. Baptisms, uh, baby showers, things like that.
Okay, uh, are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, I uh. Move that we.
Wait, 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 before you do that.
Oh.
I just want to say that um, I was ultimately twenty forty years, did a lot of interaction with the zoning board of appeals. And I've been on the board just for a year and um, I always had issues. That I just haven't had since. That 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 I really um, your stewardship has I've taught, learned a lot from it. And um, and I really appreciated it and I personally will absolutely miss you.
Thank you very much, Helen, I appreciate that. Um, okay, uh, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to section two C four of the Open Meetings Act. For the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session, Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Ralph?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes, we are in closed session. I vote yes, we are in closed session.
Thanks.